You have both? You have both, okay. All right, it's six o'clock, time to start our meeting. Welcome to City Hall. I'm your Mayor Eric Strumpf. This is our meeting for February 4th. At this point in time, we'll have a prayer led by Rick Mahalovich, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The crossroads of freedom and equality is this year's Black History Month's theme. The month, the year 2013 marks two important anniversaries in the history of African-Americans in the United States. The sesquenintennial of the Emancipation Proclamation in 1863, and the 50th anniversary of the 1963 March on Washington. All Americans are invited to study and consider the important lessons history teaches us. And for us in this room, as we work for the good of our city, maybe we can find relevance and inspiration from the quote from Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. "If you can't fly, then run; if you can't run, then walk; if you can't walk, then crawl; but whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward." In his name.
I'll ask the clerk to please have roll call. Here.
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 Thank you clerk, we have a quorum tonight. First we have underneath number seven, minutes and reports filed here at City Hall, the Environmental Quality Commission of November 15th, CAPO Board of Directors Administration Committee, Public Works Planning Committee, JCTV Steering Committee on December 6th, and the Housing Authority Board of Directors on December 18th. Next we'll go into Council Committee Reports. First of all, led by Chair Carrie Carroll, the Admin Committee. Carrie.
Thank you. Administration Committee met January 23rd, and the Housing Authority made a presentation about their water and sewer bills, and those going to the owners of the properties. And we also discussed the charter amendments for the February primary and February election, which are item 135 and 136 on our agenda tonight, and the bill regarding solicitation on public streets, which is also on tonight's agenda. Thank you. And we did appointments as well. Thanks.
Thank you Carrie. Moving on to the Finance Committee. It's also, it's shared by Sean Schulte.
Thank you Mayor. The Finance Committee is scheduled to meet Tuesday, February 26th, 7:30 a.m. across the hall.
All right, thank you Sean. Moving on to Public Safety. Mr. Larry Henry chaired that last meeting.
Thank you Mayor.
Larry.
We actually had an update on the Cole County Outdoor Warning Sirens, as far as the progress of those, and when those will possibly be finished. We had a Homeland Security update. Also update on the new Fire Station 3 and the 911 Call Center. We also, with that, brought to a vote to bring to the council to approve funding for Fire Station 3. We had an update on the outdoor warning siren-related projects by Chief Schrader. New business was actually discussed, the animals, we discussed the animals ordinance, and then also the purchase of police vehicles down the road. And our next meeting is scheduled for February 28th.
All right, and Larry, I know you also had a liaison report too tonight?
Yes, JCTV, we actually, that was scheduled last week on the 24th. There was actually no meeting due to not having a quorum. The next meeting will be February 14th at 2:00 p.m.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Public Works and Planning, it's shared by Mr. Bob Scribner.
Thank you Mayor. Public Works and Planning met on Thursday, January 24th. Had a number of items on our agenda. Discussed a parking lease for Lot 31 on Madison Street, I think it's on tonight's agenda. Mulberry Street's apartment demolition is discussed, and there'll be RFP on that. Or I guess we actually have a bid on that. Vacation right away on Morris Avenue, which is property John Gatos requested for Elias High School. Change order for sewer repairs, milling and overlay program for 2013, capital improvement projects update. We'll have, I think, a demonstration tonight of the Transit AVL system, is that, that'll be coming later, but that's kinda neat. I think you'll all find that's a good addition to our transit system. On tonight's agenda is the snow routes update, and downtown residential parking program that we put together is on tonight's agenda. And then Environmental Quality Commission's Make Your Mark Campaign presentation by Janice. And our next meeting, I don't even know when it'll be. It's next, I don't have it on here, I'm sorry. I'll have to, I'll have to update you.
February 21st is what I'm thinking.
Very good, thank you.
All righty, thank you Bob. Next we'll move into number nine, appointments by the mayor. There's a list here of several different committees. If you would like to sign up for one of our committees or boards, you can do so by going to our website or contacting our HR Director, Gail Strope. At this point in time, we will entertain a motion to approve the following additions to our boards and committees.
Some of them.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. I can do this by voice. True? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next we will run into, did Bill make it yet? No? Next we have presentations, and we are going to work down the list. We're gonna skip Bill, he's actually working right now, and he'll be with us here in just a little while. Want to introduce Lyle Rossberg, who is going to tell us more about the Host Lions. And I could tell by that familiar vest that there is definitely ham and bean and chili in our future.
Absolutely. I didn't know if you could see me, so I wanted to wear my bright vest to go along with it, you know. Plus, we blended.
Hey, by the way, occasionally I'm asked to play on, like, basketball teams.
Sure.
I might just pick you up, just so you know, because you have a little height to you, so.
Yeah, I got some height, and that's pretty much where it stops. Well, my name is Lyle Rossberg, representing the Jefferson City Host Lions Club. And a couple weeks ago, Nathan Nicholas, Mayor Strumpf, and Councilman Bray came and spoke to our group, kinda updated us on what was going on with the city, talking about upcoming events and upcoming projects and things like that. The club really, really enjoyed that. And one thing that Nathan said that stuck out in my mind was that, most time when people come up here, they want to complain to you. Well, I'm not gonna do that tonight, I'm gonna tell you some good things. The Jefferson City Host Lions Club, little history for you, I don't want to take too much of your time. The Lions Club itself was founded in 1917, and the Jeff City Host Lions were founded in 1925. And basically, it's called the Host Lions because we sponsored all the other clubs in the area. And that was a very good thing, because "we serve" is the motto of the Lions Club. Some of the things that we've done in the past, and continue to support from a city perspective, is that the Jeff City Host Lions Club was the predecessor to the Parks and Rec Board. They're the ones that started many of the parks here in town, took care of the, started the ice arena, started the binder ball fields, started Lions Ball Field next to the Eagles off of Missouri Boulevard. So we did a lot of great things there, and just most recently built the Comfort Station at West Edgewood and Wildwood, just about 10 years ago or so. So helped out Parks and Rec and the Lockwoods Group quite a bit. We've also been the sponsor of the Safety Patrol since its inception for the Police Department, sponsoring any supplies they need and giving awards to the kids that help out with that. Until recently, until the city stopped sponsoring it, we were a sponsor of every age group, a team in every age group of the baseball program. And so it was another thing that we sponsored. We've also were kind of sponsored the predecessor to what's now is the DARE program and things like that, and the Council for Drug-Free Youth. As it relates to our sponsorship of the schools, is we've helped with the football locker room renovation, helped with the scoreboard, the Miller Center, and the track stadium renovation. So we've done a lot of work for the community in that regard. And in addition, we've also support every year the Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers Big Sisters, the Samaritan Center Nutrition Center, the Buddy Pack Food Program. We were in the Oktoberfest, we participated in the grape stomp there, with all the money proceeds raised from that go to the Lions Eye Research Foundation in Columbia. So, very helpful in that regard. Our national and state areas, we focus on hearing and eye screening, we do the Missouri Lions Eye Research Foundation and tissue donation in Columbia, Leader Dogs for the Blind, which is a national program, and we help the local National Federation for the Blind group. But the reason I'm here today is just to kinda tell you, all those great things don't come free, as you know. And so, we're having a fundraiser on Wednesday. It's the 57th Annual Ham and Bean, Second Annual Chili Event. We've added chili, because ham and bean seems to be going a little out of style, but still you can have all of your gaseous type activities on Wednesday. We'll be serving noon and evening, 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., and 4:00 to 7:00. Both dine-in, family-style, and takeout, with generous helpings. And we'll have not only ham and bean, but sauerkraut, lots of hot dogs, cornbread, chocolate and vanilla cake, all sorts of good stuff, and plus, just a good time to get out and see that many people. Last year, we served 1,900 people, and we hope to surpass that this year, since I'm chairman, there's always a new goal in mind. So, I just wanted to thank you very much for your support of the community, and the Lions' support as well. And if you want to come on Wednesday, we'd be happy to serve you, so we can continue to serve the community, as that is our motto. You have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Lyle? Ralph?
Would you repeat those hours for Wednesday, for the noon especially?
Yeah, 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Dine-in or carry-out, and then 4:00, 4:00 p.m., you can catch the early senior discount at 4:00 p.m. and go until 7:00 p.m. It's $8.00 in advance, and we have tickets here in San Bushman, or any Lions Club member, Rick's got them, Mayor Eric Strumpf, that sort of thing. And we, and I was gonna phrase away from calling everybody Lion, Mayor Eric Strumpf and Lion Rick Prather. It's lion as in lion, not lying, you'll have to determine that on your own. But that gets some people confused, so I kinda refrain from that. But I hope you'll come out, it'll be $9.00 at the door, so you can just walk right up.
All right. Hey Lyle, thank you, and thanks for all that the Lions do for our community. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks.
Next, I'm gonna move into JCTV. I have two people here representing Lincoln tonight, and first we'll hear from Gloria Inlow. Good evening Gloria, and welcome to City Hall. And welcome to your channel, by the way, too.
Yeah, move that down a little bit. I wanted to give the council an update on where we stand. Since the 1st of November, we have kind of increased our fundraising efforts. One of the things we started doing was collecting membership fees from our programmers, as well as people who want to support JCTV. And so far, we have 25 new members who have signed up. We've raised around $3,300 in membership fees and donations. A lot of those donations were from Lincoln University employees, and we had some sponsorships too of our Christmas programs, the Capitol Caroling Concert, and the JC's Christmas Parade. The week of February 17th, we're going to be hosting an event called PSA Days. We're gonna have three days where nonprofits can come to the station and have a PSA produced for them by JCTV in exchange for signing up and becoming members and supporters of the station. We're working with United Way to get their agencies involved in that. And so far, we have five people who've signed up, and that just went out last week, so we're getting some pretty encouraging responses from that. Our big fundraiser is coming up February 28th. We're going to host a barbecue dinner and concert at the President's Residence at 601 Jackson Street. We're going to have three musical acts. We're gonna have the Dirty Birds perform, vocalist Sylvia Ferguson, and jazz performer Tom Andes will be our headliner of that event. We'll have a barbecue dinner from Michael's Unforgettable Bowl Barbecue. We'll have a silent auction, and a raffle as well. And it's gonna serve primarily as a membership drive, get people interested in JCTV, find out what the benefits are of becoming a member, and why they should support JCTV. So tickets are on sale, they're $25.00 each, or two for 40, and we have a limited amount of tickets. We're only gonna have 75 tickets, because the President's Residence is beautiful, but it's not an amphitheater by any means. So, if you are interested in purchasing tickets, we urge you to contact us quickly. We can be reached at 681-5443. You can also visit our website, jctvaccess.com, we have our email address and other contact information there. The concert will be televised and broadcast the following week, the week after the event, as part of a telethon to get even more support for the station that way. And that is, that's our, our big event, February 28th.
All right, thank you Gloria. Any questions by council members about the event, or anything else coming up that JCTV is doing? Gloria, I want to thank you, you know, last year during the budget season, we didn't have as much money as what we thought, when Nathan and I first started looking at the budget, and as I've told you, and other members of Lincoln, and other members of the, of the watching community, you know, hats off for what you guys are doing. I think it's important that you guys do, obviously contribute financially to JCTV, but I think you're off to a good start, and I look forward to the event, and bought my tickets right before this, so. Mr. Bob.
Gloria, I just did some quick math, and if, if you have 75 people and you collect $25.00 apiece, that's $1,875.00, which is a nice amount of money, but it's far, far short of what you need. Do you have any other fundraising events planned?
The other thing we're going to do, like I said, is we're on a telethon the week after the event, and hope to raise some additional contributions that way. We are setting up payroll deductions for our employees, and urging our employees to give to JCTV through that. And we are also setting up our website to accept donations from the community. And I just got a phone with our developer today, and that looks like we're gonna be able to move forward on that.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Gloria, thank you for being here, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, I have Dr. Connie Homacher, the interim president of Lincoln University. Connie, good evening and welcome, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you Mayor Strumpf, and the council members. And as Eric said, my name is Connie Homacher, and I am the interim president of Lincoln University. I would like to thank the council and the mayor for your support in our partnership with JCTV, and let you know that Lincoln University is committed to the future of JCTV. Gloria has given you an update on where the Steering Committee is, is going, and I want you to know that right now, we're in the budgetary process. And so, we will take a serious look at this as we go through the budgetary process, to see if there are additional funds that we can place on the table to support this. We have supported it in the past. During the last three years, we spent over $280,115.00 in remodeling, and in utility, utilities, maintenance, things that are just normal operations for the institution. In addition to that, we purchased over $125,000.00 of equipment. So I don't think, I don't want you to think that Lincoln has not been partnering adequately also. And we will look to see if there are additional funds that we can assist in supporting this endeavor together, because our partnership is very important to us also. Questions?
All right, any questions for Connie? Connie, thank you for being here. And by the way, on behalf of the entire community, thank you for stepping up to the plate and being the interim president. I know recently you just announced your new president, but for you to step up and do that, I think's a very great thing. Let's give her a round of applause for doing such.
Thank you. And Dr. Rome, I'm sure several of you met him while he was here. Will be in this week for the board meeting at Lincoln University. And again, he will start officially June 1st.
Great, thank you Connie. Okay, next I have on tonight's agenda, I have Mr. Roger Schwartz, and a new bus app.
Thank you Mayor. This is something we were hoping to do live, but obviously, the buses aren't running, so you can't really see them out on the road now. But what we've got is, is a new app that folks can download on their iPhone or Android phone, either one. It's fairly simple. There's actually a QR code that we've set up, and have on all of our bus shelters and our buses, so they can go up and just download the QR code. Or, if you want to use your computer, you can go through and log on this way, and the username is Jeff Tran, the password is BUS to get in. And hopefully... Bill, this isn't advancing for me, so go ahead and advance it for me. There you go. Once you do that, it comes up to this screen. Fleet Matics is the name of the company that has this software. Then you just click on the live fleet there, and it comes up with a list of the buses for the, all of the fixed routes. So if you know which bus you're looking for, you can click on that bus and advance it to the other side, or you can just leave them all in, as what we've done here. And if you want to see where all the buses are, then all you have to do is tell it to run, and it'll show you where all the buses are. On this particular screen, what you're seeing here is, is the buses at our bus station, it's showing several of them in a row there. So, this is where they would be when they're back at, on Miller Street altogether. And I think there's one more slide, Bill, that if you're actually out on a route, zoom out a little bit, it'll show you, if, give you your location, and there's a little pop-up there that tells you what bus it is, and where you can actually see how far the bus is from getting to where you are, and you'll have an idea of how much time you might have to wait. So, this is a new little package that we've got. All of our buses have this on. It's gonna be particularly good for the folks on the route buses, but we're very excited about it for our Handy Wheels buses as well. Because our dispatchers are able to now use this, we can see where all the buses are, and if we have a call and need to pick up someone else, they can see what the closest bus is, so that we can be more efficient in our routing of our buses. Because Handy Wheels is something that we're continuing to get more usage on, and, and there are times that we're not able to necessarily handle all of our riders all the time on Handy Wheels. So, it, this is gonna be important for us as we move forward. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Roger? Roger, thank you, it's a, it looks to be a very nice tool. Coming up next, I have Mr. Nathan Nicholas. Tell us more about the conference center and that update.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. As I believe everyone should know by now, we received proposals on the 31st, and happy to report that we received three proposals, in case you haven't already heard that. I think we notified everybody pretty much about that. So the question the mayor asked me to address is, where do we go from here? What is our next step? And I am prepared to outline for you a plan as to how we go through what was originally referred to as Phase 1. And, you know, of course, the council can decide what the details of all the plan are, but just so you have something to kinda work with, I will, I will try and lay this out for you. I did, not as high-tech as Transit, but I did make a sheet for everybody, so that everyone kinda has the notes. I wanted to discuss first, though, the issue that, that in this Phase 1, which is where the only thing we'll be doing in Phase 1 is deciding which proposers are qualified to move into Phase 2. So it's just a looking at qualifications, and deciding who we want to continue to negotiate with in Phase 2. That phase traditionally would be closed. And this policy, actually, we did a little research on it, this policy goes back a long ways. At least until 1987, there was a resolution in 1987. It is the way that, that most other cities would do it. And it accomplishes two things. First of all, fairness to the proposers, so that all the proposers are being looked at, you know, just for themselves, and they're not at this stage competing against each other. And secondly, fairness to the citizens. It is the plan to reveal us all to the citizens, and have the citizens participate in the process. But it would be unfair to let certain citizens see it now, and other citizens, the citizens as a whole, not see it until later. So what we'll do is essentially, we believe now that we can accomplish this Phase 1 in two meetings. We recommend that the council act as a whole, as a committee as a whole, to be the review committee. In this phase, as I said, there'd be no discussion about the merits of proposals. I think that we can meet twice and get it done. That would put us done with Phase 1 at, by the end of February, very easily. And that is well in keeping with our timetable that we were hoping to do when we talked about the RFP. The staff will and has looked over the proposals to see if they meet the minimum criteria. We will distribute those proposals. We've essentially combined them all and copied them into, into a book for each of you, and we will pass those books out to you after the council meeting. They'll be available across the hall in the large conference center. We do, and I'll pass it out now, have some guidelines, basically, which say that we recommend that those books be kept confidential. Obviously, we can't enforce anything on the council, but again, in keeping with the fairness of the process, and following what has been existing city, city policy and law, that we recommend that we continue on that, on that route. So, the staff will check the proposals, see if they meet the minimum criteria. If it does not, all we will do is report to the council that, that we found that this, this proposal does not meet the minimum criteria in this particular subject. What we do about that is a decision that the council will have to make. So, in Phase 1, again, there would just be the council and the staff present at that meeting. We'll review each proposal separately. I can, I can, I think, reveal that some of the proposals have alternates in them, so we would look at each of those separately as well. And then sort of the rough agenda item there, and basically, again, we're just looking at the concept that's being proposed from a very 50,000-feet viewpoint. You're not, you know, at the stage here saying, well, I like this proposal because it's got the, the green paint in the lobby, and this other proposal, you know, they're recommending mauve paint in the lobby. We are not anywhere near that stage. In fact, what you'll see in the proposals is none of those details. So we're just looking at it at a very, as Mayor Landwore used to always say, 50,000-foot level. But, the question is, is, does the concept as a whole make some kind of sense? Not really whether is it the best proposal, or whether is it the proposal that we think is gonna work, but will it in and of itself, does it make some kind of sense? And then, you move pretty much straight into looking at the qualifications, looking at what they've said in terms of what their ability to provide and meet the requirements and deadlines and such. And if they meet those qualifications, and if the concept makes general sense, then you would move them on to Phase 2. However, we believe that in this initial meeting, as the council looks through these, they may have some questions, that the proposals may not have stated things in a way that is clearly understood, or there may be questions about whether their proposals actually meet the criteria that was set out. And so, it may be necessary to ask the proposers to clarify what they have sent. In fact, we expect that that will be the case in, in probably all of them. So, between Meeting 1 and Meeting 2, we would send out those written questions for the proposers to clarify, and it would be unique to each one. And then, subsequent to that, we would meet again. Again, just the council and staff. We would go over all the qualifications in more detail. We would go over the responses that we had gotten, and the council would then vote which proposals to move on to Phase 2, which is the actual, when we begin to sit down and start negotiating with people, and designing and all of that. As part of that, we'll have to have a space of time between the second meeting and the first meeting of Phase 2. That is, when the proposals will sit down, proposers will sit down and actually draw up some designs, at least some sketch designs that we could have been, been talking about. And also, we, we, when we discussed the RFP, lo these many months ago, the issue of stipends came up, that is, whether we would pay the proposers a stipend to, to cover some of their costs for moving into Phase 2. And essentially, the council decided to kind of kick that down the road a little bit. Well, the road ends at Phase 1, Meeting 2. At that point, we have to decide, is there gonna be a stipend, or is there not gonna be a stipend? And then we would also, in that meeting, kind of set forth how we're going to move forward on, on Phase 3, I'm sorry, Phase 2, and how many meetings, and schedule all of those meetings. Phase 2 will be far more intensive, because you'll be negotiating back and forth, and really looking at a lot of documents. And, as I said, at some point during Phase 2, we need to bring the public in for discussion, and so, we need to decide exactly how that's, how that's gonna happen, and at what point it's appropriate to do so. It's a bit of a tricky question about when we do that, and we can kinda discuss that during the meeting. So, that is the, what we've laid out here. Again, I would say we need to set two meetings between now and the end of February. I would suggest one fairly soon, and the other one maybe a little later in February, but leaving ourselves plenty of time, so that we can make sure that we accomplish Phase 1 by the end of February, which was our goal. And I'm open to any questions or suggestions of meeting times.
Dr. Poe.
Nathan, on our first paper, it says council as a whole will act as review committee.
Nathan, on our first paper, it says council as a whole will act as review committee. On our second paper, it says some panel members, now that means the council review committee. Some panel members may be compelled to communicate the details of their involvement with their superior department head or other superiors from time to time. However, it is imperative that the panel member convey, convey the importance of confidentiality to those. Explain how that fits.
This is the general requirement that we, whenever we have these panels, that we would pass out something like this or explain something like this to who it is. In this case, rather than having staff, normally, normally in an RFP, the normal procedure would be for staff to do this work. But the council, and I believe it'd be the appropriate decision, the council will be doing that. So the language doesn't quite fit, but you kind of get the general sense of, of what our policies are.
So this particular line, so there are no instances?
Right, you have no, you have no superior.
We, where we are, we have no one, we have no one to communicate based on these two documents?
No one that you'd have to communicate with, that's correct.
Or should.
Well, staff, you can communicate with the staff.
Right, of course, the, well, and the staff, this involves so far you and the department heads or not the?
So far, so far, the only staff that have seen the proposals are myself, Ms. Stevenson, who's our purchasing agent, Roger Schwartz, who did the compiling and, and that sort of thing. And then Mr. Betts, because right now he's acting as, as Ms. Stevenson's superior.
Okay. I, I would just recommend that if we follow this, if we be given an exact list of who we should or should not talk with. And those are as of today, but as it, as there's flux involved and other people come into the discussion, I just want to make sure that I don't violate the confidentiality of these documents, if that's the way we're going to do it.
Well, I think we can certainly provide you with that list. I mean, the general rule is it's going to be council and staff only.
Any staff?
Well, I mean, I can clarify which staff, if that's what you would like.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Carroll?
My question is similar to Councilman Pope in that the confidentiality part. I know we talked about fairness and you mentioned confidentiality, as in you've asked us not to share, but there's really, you can't prevent us from doing that. And my question is to the public too, so they understand. Because anytime we talk about closing things, it can be looked at or perceived as not fair and open. So we have the word fairness, but we also have confidential. And certain things have to be confidential. But my question to you is how this pertains to the sunshine law? What are we required to disclose or not? I'm sure that we'll be asked from the press and reporters about questions and, like Dr. Pope said specifically, what can we share? So I'm just a little uncomfortable because that term is kind of vague. Like you want us to be confidential, but we aren't required to be. So if one person on the council decides to share information, I just want to know strictly based on the rules of the sunshine law, what we are supposed to follow so that we know that we are exactly following the rule of the law to the T on this.
Drew, under, under what part or subsection of the sunshine law would this pertain to, please?
Well, I just happened to bring the sunshine law book with me.
I kind of saw that, but I knew you would know.
Specifically, it's 610021, which talks about what meetings can be closed. And it's sub 12, which says, the second line of which says sealed proposals and related documents, or any documents related to negotiated contract until the contract is executed. So that's the, that's the section that's applicable here because we've got a proposal. And so you could close it until you've actually got a contract. But again, because you're interested probably in a public input, it seems as though the plan now is to open it up sometime before we've got a contract. Now, that's, you guys get to decide that, but I think that's what's being proposed. And I think the question about leaving the Stage One is, Stage One confidential is because you're, you're getting through that first stage in order to get to the point where you're kind of in a position where you've got some form of a proposal that you're ready to go without having shopped the bid. I don't know if that helped any or not.
Would Phase, would Phase Two then be open, Drew?
Well, I, if I heard Nathan right, at some point, he, he thought that would be the way to go. But again, that's up to you guys.
You have to remember that we're-
Uh, Bob? Bob? Will Phase Two be open?
At some point, you have to remember that the initial phases, the proposals are still very general. And until you've essentially locked each proposal, proposer, down to what their proposal is, you really can't begin to open it up. Because if you do, then they, then essentially you're, you're bid shopping at that point. Because they, that will become public and they will use that information to change all of their bids. So at some point, we have to make that decision of when that is to do that.
Roger, I know you deal with a lot of these bids or have in the past. What, what we see before us and, and the, the road we're heading down, is this, is this common to you and common to these types of, of projects?
Yeah, when you're in a, an RFP situation,
Right.
until a decision is made as to who you've selected, it remains confidential.
Okay, thank you.
That's been my experience.
Follow-up, Carrie?
Yes, so basically, when Nathan, when you told us to, you, you're going to ask us to remain confidential, but you can't really tell us to. Really what that means, though, from what I'm hearing from Drew, is if we are not confidential about this material, then we, any councilman would be in violation of the sunshine law if we were not confidential. And then also, I would want to make sure we have that list that Dr. Pope requested. So we're very clear on what staff we should discuss. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
I'm not sure, you wouldn't be in violation of the sunshine law necessarily. But you could, you, you would be at risk of bid shopping if you do it too soon. Now, I mean, it's, you know, it's not a straight line. So where that is exactly, it's hard to say. But the sunshine law, again, on most things, you can have it open if you choose to have it open.
And I, I can just explain, you know, we, we use the term bid shopping all the time. But essentially, bid shopping is when you go to a, a bidder, say you're buying widgets, and you go to the first manufacturer and you say, you know, what is your bid? And he gives you a bid. And then you go to the second manufacturer and say, hey, this guy said, said this, can you match that? And that has been deemed by the courts to be a corrupt practice. And so you, I, I agree with, with the council that you're not really in danger of violating the sunshine law. Although I would caution the council that, the council, that there is some, there is some risk of liability, you know, from one of the bidders that ultimately is not successful if they feel like that information that was released was damaging to their proposal.
One last follow-up, then. I just want to make sure that we know, because we so often want government to be open and we all, I know, feel that way. So we want to just make it clear to the public why we can't be open. Because this is sort of a, something that hasn't really come before this council in, in a long time, where we have been able, where we've had to keep this information closed. This is the sort of thing that's, it's kind of different from what we face. So we just want to make sure, I guess, that the public clearly understands why we, and it makes total sense why we should keep this information to the selected few that need to know. And there's a lot of ramifications if we don't. But I just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page and understands, I guess, why. It's not because we're trying to, it's, it's the way it needs to be. Thanks.
I said on, I said something on the radio the other day. I'm going to take a minute just to explain. We talked about the conference center and how long we've been at this as a community, roughly 80-some years. The way I look at it right now, this ball is probably on the 20, since we just had a Super Bowl. I have all confidence in our, in our council and our, and our staff that, that we can get through this, make the decisions that we need to make in, in a, in a closed forum and keep the negotiations as they, as they should be done. And at the same time, I look forward to everything becoming public and everyone being able to see what kind of proposals we have over time. Mr. Scribner?
I, I think some of the confusion, if there, if there is confusion, is that your comment that the, that the council, that you couldn't tell the council not to be open. I, I think you were referring to the council as a whole, not to individual council members necessarily, even though individual council members could choose to do that. But what makes this process different is that normally staff is doing this evaluation. And staff keeps it confidential up until the point whenever they hold a meeting and, and tell us what they have selected. And what you're saying is that in this process, the council will serve that purpose that the staff normally serves and will make this selection. And that you're saying that we should follow the same procedure as staff, keep it confidential, just like staff would if they were doing the evaluation. So my question is, in order to make sure that everyone feels bound, would it make sense to have some sort of a resolution that says the sense of the council is that we will have, keep these discussions confidential until such time the council decides that they will open it up for public discussion?
Well, I, I think that would be very helpful. Of course, ultimately, I'm not sure how you enforce it. But I, I think that would be very helpful so that everyone kind of understood exactly where the council is. And I think you've worded it exactly right, that it's, it's closed until the council decides that it's time to make it open. That's, that's, that's a decision of the council as a whole. It should not be the decision of any one council person to, to open it on their own.
Very true.
So the question is?
Drew, you want to help us with a quick resolution along those lines? I know, I don't, I guess, can we do it now or do we have to wait until new business? I'd almost rather just do it now if the council doesn't mind. That's what I'm thinking. If Drew could help us with the motion, maybe some-
I would make a motion that it is the sense of the council, that we will keep these discussions of, of this matter closed until such time as the council by vote decides to open it to the public.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Henry. Okay. A motion, discussion. Drew, do you have any discussion?
No, except that, again, just as Nathan said, it is the, it's the body's closed information and the body releases it. So I think that's an excellent motion, phrased very well.
Yeah, good idea. Scribner, the attorney-to-be. Okay, any other comments, seeing none, debate seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes.
We need to decide on the meeting dates.
Okay.
Some discussion of that.
I think currently we have the 7th and I forget when else. I was going to ask Laura, but Laura's not here.
Well, I think it was the 19th, actually. Those won't work now.
Okay. 7:13 and-
21.
And 21. I know that Carrie has a conflict the night of the 7th. I think at one time we were going to try to do like 4 to 6. I, I don't know what the, what that day is necessarily. Clerk for a brown bagel, do you have a brown bagel that morning? Well, no, I wouldn't, because it'd be this Thursday. I mean, it's-
Yeah.
Would, would the council entertain a motion to move that meeting? Hold on just a second. How much time do you need that morning?
I, I think first meeting we could do in an hour.
Okay. To have that meeting from 7:30 to 8:30 this Thursday morning? So you can't? Okay. Okay. Any other ideas that, that kind of keep us semi-on track so we can debate? She can't, she can't on Thursday night? Yes, Carrie?
Could we do it Monday, the 11th instead of a work session? Since typically our Mondays are open, I would suggest Monday, the 11th and Monday, the 25th.
I think the 11th, I think that conflicts with school, with a school board meeting, is that right, Bob? Okay. And I'm actually going to try to. I don't know if it's that one, I know I have one coming up, I have to go to.
Was the 13th available for everybody? Not for you?
You're gone, Carrie?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Friday morning, the 15th, maybe? We were talking Friday morning over on this end. Or Tuesday, the 12th morning, or Tuesdays don't work for Dr. Pope. Friday morning, February 15th?
I can't make it then, I've got, I've got two things booked already. Did anyone say anything about the 8th yet?
I won't be here the 8th.
What's that?
I won't be here the 8th. What about Monday morning, the 11th? Typically, Mondays and Fridays, we don't have a lot of meetings in the mornings.
What about Monday?
Monday morning, the 11th?
Monday going once, going twice. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion for Monday, the 11th, 7:30 to 8:30. I need a motion. Do I have a motion? I'm assuming Carrie's going to make that motion. Is there a second? Are you busy? If, is there a second? Okay. Monday, the 11th? Okay, I don't, I don't see a second unless I hear a second. Okay, Bob's second, so, okay. So discussion, you think you have jury duty? What about, I'm going to go out on a limb here.
I don't mean inter, interject, but on jury duty, you can email them and tell them the dates that you have commitments. You can tell them.
Guys, what about?
Doesn't mean you get out of it just for that particular day.
What about, what about this Saturday morning? I'll buy breakfast. I tell you what, due to our, that, that machine back there only has so much tape and Madeline's going to run out of tape. If, if it's okay with you guys, you want to look at this right after the meeting or maybe one of the last things we do. In the meantime, we can kind of do whatever, is that all right? I think we can have a meeting about setting a meeting, is that okay, without having an agenda? I'm asking, Drew, is that all right?
Uh, are you talking about at the end of this meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine, just under new business?
Yes.
Okay, so that wouldn't be a, you wouldn't adjourn.
Right, right, we won't adjourn. Someone remind me. Okay. Uh, is there a motion on the floor currently for, when is it?
Monday morning, the 11th of February.
Okay. I better look and see. Is there a discussion on the motion of the 11th? That was made by Scribner and seconded by Henry?
Carrie?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got lost there. Uh, any more discussion? Debate? Will now vote on the original motion, which is to?
Monday, the 11th?
Monday, 11th?
7:30 to 8:30.
7:30, 8:30? Okay. Roll call, please.
You can do a voice vote if you want on that, it's just a motion.
I'll just do roll, because I can't hear tonight. Thanks.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Weber?
Okay, that passes 10 zip. While we're here, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion for the week of the 18th. Let's try to go in and get that set up too while we're here.
You currently have the 21st, 4 to 6 P.M., which is fine.
Shouldn't be okay? Oh, thank you.
Unless there's other conflicts.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion for 4 to 6 on the 21st. Is it second?
Second.
Discussion? Debate? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, great, guys, we got that done. I know this is a very busy time of year for everyone. A lot of people own different businesses and whatnot. And that sets up, Mr. Nathan, our first two meetings. And we can do the other ones as, as we go. Good enough?
Mayor, so the 13th is canceled. There is no 13th, the one that Laura had emailed out three. So we only have the two, correct? We'll cancel the 13th?
Correct, just the two.
Thank you.
All right.